You out?
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna start the meeting. Mike, are you good, are we good to go almost? Oh, we're recording? Oh, okay. All right, so I'll call the meeting to order. Record attendance, everybody's here. No absent with regrets. Any declarations of conflict of interest, anybody? And you can certainly declare at the time of the agenda item. Approval of agenda additions and deletions. Okay, CAO, we had an addition, but there it was going. Fishery letter.
Right.
Okay. So under 10A, I'm gonna put fishery. Any more additions? Anyone? Deletions? Good. Okay. Motion for the agenda with the addition, please. Counselor McLeod, second by Counselor Lesser. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried, thank you. There's our approval presentations. So we have with us, and I have to say, we're thrilled to have you, Andrew, even if you're, I would, I guess I'm, I'm going to guess and say Amherst. Are you in Amherst? Okay. So Andrew Cameron, I think as most folks know, has done Ocean View and, or Ocean, is that Ocean View? Ocean Breeze. We've got, we've got Ocean everything here, Andrew. We're surrounded by it. So he's done that and he's going to present to us on affordable housing, just as a matter of, you know, information and, and helpful tips. So Andrew, I'm going to let you take it away. We're thrilled you're here, though.
Perfect. Yes, thank you very much for letting me come down and kinda share sort of what I've learned and what I've learned or thought about over the last 10 years or something that I've been.
And for counsel, you can follow.
So I don't want to take much time, but again, thank you very much for letting me come down and talk. So a little bit of background on us is we started building apartments up on Corner Forest and Hayley Road in 2010. We expanded up to Amherst in 2015 and between Amherst and Yarmouth, currently we've built and managed 213 units. In the fall of 2013, sort of background on affordable housing, I was invited to a choice housing meeting. I met Stephane Richard with Housing Nova Scotia, learning about some of the programs they had for affordable housing. And we built one four-unit project just in Hebron, right by Hebron Corner, as a test in 2014. The project went well, we decided to do some more. So I guess this question to answer is sort of why, why am I here? I think over the last year, especially with COVID-19, affordable housing and the discussion on affordable housing has become much more prominent and much more necessary than it really has been over the last while. And I, I wanted to come share because I know the difference that I've made in our individual tenants' lives, who have been able to access one of our affordable housing units. Also, I built 20 units in Yarmouth and more in Amherst and I don't, we've made a difference in individual lives, but we haven't. I don't feel like it impacted the size of the actual problem. I'm behind it. I said I have, and I have enough data, we did it long enough, we have enough data that I want to present it and share it that way. Also, there is the Affordable Housing Commission that the province put on. I am on a subcommittee of that commission to look at increasing the number of units built by the private sector. So that sort of ties into sort of the whole kind of conversation in why I wanted to come present. This is just a quick background summary on sort of what our typical uni, affordable housing units are. You know, the one bedroom, a full-size kitchen, five appliances. Right now, they rent for $750, heat, lights, hot water included. And with the program we access, basically, there's the income cutoff. If your income is below that, you would qualify, and then your rent is $750. We don't do sort of a percentage of income for our units. It's just, it's the flat, it's flat rental rates. So this is all just background information, but this is sort of the data that I've gotten and for what we've done. So as you can see, in 2014, we built four units in Yarmouth. Basically, we built four units a year for five years. And we built more up in Amherst. But over the last, well, from 2014, 2018, we built 60 different units with capital contributions from Housing Nova Scotia that were qualifying as affordable housing units. And so from there, out of all the one bedrooms we've built, this is our typical, like a turnover rate for the last three years. So this would be the number of times somebody's moved out of one of these apartments and somebody's moved in. So as you can see, we average turning over about four units a year in Amherst and four units a year in Yarmouth. And so what happens from there is in Yarmouth, now this number was from the end of October, and it's, I think it's just, or actually, I think it's gone up a little bit. We had 45 people that had contacted us looking for one-bedroom units at this price range. And so this, this waiting list doesn't include anybody looking for public housing, this doesn't include anybody that has contacted us. This is just people who have contacted us looking for one of our apartments. So if I take that, if we basically turn over four apartments a year and we have 45 people looking for an apartment, we're effectively at like a 10-year waiting list for people to move into one of our one-bedroom units. You know, it may speed up or go up or down, but essentially, that's the timeframe on these units. So my takeaway from this is there's so many more units that need to be built and can be built to help sort of look at or address this issue at this time. And so I looked at it and I went, and so these are the numbers that I got from just knowing what's being built in Yarmouth. I didn't go to Natalie or anybody and say, look, it's specific numbers. But when I look at it, I figured there was 82 units built over the last five years in Yarmouth. So for an average of 16, 12 of those being affordable. So I think the average is actually two point, what, two point, yeah, 2.4, but I rounded it up to three. So what I looked at was, you know, if we want, if we just wanted to place the 45 people on our list in five years, we have to increase number of affordable units being built per year by either increasing the total number of units being built or increasing the percentage that are affordable. And that's sort of just the way that I looked at it. And I think that's the challenge, is increasing sort of the supply and the capacity of the industry to create and build affordable units down there. So there's a lot of data in there. I guess I just wanted to pause, see if there was anybody sort of had any quick questions to clarify any of those points or anything before kind of keep moving on.
Looks like we're good. Carry on.
Sounds good. So from me thinking about this, like with the affordable housing issue, is we need to deal and address each individual situation, each individual person, because they need help now. Except there are systemic issues and there are systemic things that are causing this. But I think collective action to make a difference behind this. And if it's the private sector to, to push or lead this, we need a sustained, continuous push for developing new units down that way. And I don't think that the development industry in Yarmouth has this capacity right now. And I think, and when I say the development industry, I don't mean, well, I'm not even looking for anything. I'm just saying I think the development industry in terms of the town, the town of Yarmouth and the area of Yarmouth needs help or support from the town. Like I said, I'm not looking for anything. I think just in general, it needs some help some way. And some of the things that I think are, that the town can do that, you know, individual developers can't do is just really push and advocate. Because I think a lot of the programs that are designed and made by Housing Nova Scotia or CMHC are first designed for Toronto, Vancouver, Montreal, and then they get modified down to Halifax and they stop there. But they don't fit for the challenges in rural areas. And so, like I said, the province created the Affordable Housing Commission and are looking for submissions. And if the town and other municipalities can keep pushing and highlighting that, that the challenges in Yarmouth and Amherst and Shelburne and Ananquinish are different than Halifax, and we need different supports, we need different help, and just keep pushing that message, perhaps we can break through and get that help. There's other things, like rent supplements, getting more of them and getting them more down Yarmouth way can help. Other things that I find is there, CMHC isn't gathering and getting the market data on Yarmouth and Yarmouth County. And I think, to me, I think if the problem, if you don't have the data, it just, it doesn't exist. It doesn't exist to anybody else, but it exists in Yarmouth, it exists in Amherst. And we kind of, we need, we need the data and somebody else needs to get the data. Because I'm not, if I have to do a research project before I build something, I'm not going to do a research project, I'm just gonna move on to something else. Right? So somebody else that does it needs to do that. So these are some of the things that I think the town can push for. I think I'd said before, Iponz, which is Investment Property Owners Association Nova Scotia, and the Nova Scotia Community College created a property management program in Halifax, and that's offered in Halifax. And that's something with pushing for could be brought down to Yarmouth to run through coverage. And I think one of the advantages with that is, is if there was options for professional property management firms in Yarmouth, it may ease attracting developers from other areas that could come down and build but may not be able to manage the properties. If there was that industry and that service offered in Yarmouth, throughout the area, that may help attract more people. That's sort of on the advocating side of things. I also think there's always going to be a push for financial incentives. And I think one thing that I kind of think is, the initial push will be on property tax rebates. And I don't know if the legislation's there where towns can do it or not. I just, I always worry that if that starts, it becomes a race to the bottom, that it becomes every town offering more rates, trying to get more developers. So I'm not gonna offer any more opinion beyond that. I just think it's, can be a challenge. And beyond that, but I think there's more different things that can be done that may actually work better than offering those property tax rebates. Because I think that one of the, when I look at it, I think it's challenging to attract developers down to Yarmouth because of the distance and that if you try to get somebody coming down to Halifax, you ask them to go past the valley, pass Middleton, come all the way down here. So if there's different things that you can offer or come up with to try to attract people or to help develop new local developers, you may have more success that way. And stopping at property tax rebates, if that's the decision, I won't comment one way or the other on that, I think there's more opportunities and more other innovative ideas and different ideas that actually you could take to actually help maybe potentially attract or help develop the industry and the capacity of the industry to address sort of the affordable housing crisis that we have. I have, I have another idea. I don't know if, maybe before I talk about that, maybe if there's just any other questions or thoughts or discussion at this point. Suppose maybe I'll pause here.
No, maybe after you're finished, we might have a couple of questions.
Yeah, so one of the things that I've often thought about when looking at, like, trying to help or develop the capacity of the industry, because I know there are a couple of different larger projects in the works with giving development agreements. And they are, they are fantastic, they will help, and it's developing that pipeline. So there's always sort of one or two in the works so that when these get built next year, there's not a delay of a year or two there. So, for example, one of the things that real estate development requires is just a lot of capital. It's very capital intensive, and that increases the risk. Right? So for a developer to come down to Yarmouth and, you know, buy $100,000 piece of land and put in $200,000 for services, it's a, that's a lot of capital to tie up without intensive risk. So something that I was just throwing out there was if the town's possible, develop some land for sale, and if the town could then turn around and sell it to developers at cost, but then get paid at the end of the project. Something like this can help developers come down and test. If an idea would work and help minimize some of the risk, right? Well, a developer could come down, try something. And if it works, then go buy a piece of land and know that has a bit more confidence itself to minimize some of the risk of coming down to Yarmouth, buying land, starting a project. Right? And that would be for attracting, you know, developers down to town. If you have this for new developer in town, like local developer, if they don't have, if they have limited capital to buy the land, or if they have to buy land, service land and it uses all their capital, it may be challenging for them to also then start a project. So if there's a way, so this can help them that they, the new developers locally can use their capital to help the project. Right? So that's sort of the thought that can help them get started. And there's lots of, you know, there's lots of specifics to map out on the projects and how to administer and all that sort of stuff. But this is just sort of one idea I had to share to push beyond, try to think of innovative and innovative ways to help develop the, the development industry. So that was just one idea that I had to throw out there. But I think the other thing is, the other thing I think on longer term is, I think, I've also come to that we know our communities the best, that I think towns and municipalities can really push to advocate for more local control over housing, housing, housing programs. And I think that just, we need more control over the programs and everything in our communities so that we can make the decisions to help enact in our community's best interest. And that's, that's something that I think municipalities get really, hopefully pushed and advocate for, but that's not a quick, that's not a quick thing, but I think over the long term, that's where the solutions for these problems can actually come from. So that's sort of my very, very quick kind of run-through on this. Like I said, my contact information, our office, my, you know, cell phone number, my email address, if anybody does have any other thoughts or questions afterwards, or, you know, please, please contact me, let me, let me know. I can be more than gladly to chat or continue the conversation or answer any other questions that people may have.
Thank you, Andrew.
Yeah.
Questions for Andrew? I don't see any questions. I just have a quick one. Okay, go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, I have a question, Andrew, and, and thank you for, thank you for the presentation. I, I noticed in your lead-in, and I know this isn't exactly on the, the issue you're trying to, to get at, but I am curious. In 2014, you built a four-unit project in Hebron?
Yep.
And you've, you have something like, what, 60 units in town?
In Yarmouth?
Yes.
In total, I think we're at around 110 units in total.
110, okay. So I grossly underestimated. So, so the question, I guess, is, is that sometimes counsel is, is approached and we get beat up about tax rates and we get beat up about development charges. But those things do exist and you've dealt with those in, in our community. Are those red herrings when it comes to, to, to a certain extent? I mean, you've only done the one building that I'm aware of outside of town. So can you speak to, speak to how you weigh out the cost benefit of developing within the town versus out in the surrounding area?
So the, the four-unit building in Hebron was a bit of an anomaly because we bought, we had built, we had bought land and built a house for ourselves and then had the land next to it, then built the four-unit building on the land next to us because there was sewer and water there. So that was sort of an anomaly where we had gotten that land. There's, for me, I don't, depending on the size of the project and where you're building, these were never large enough that they really impacted the decision one way or the other. And that was for the size of our project. Perhaps given to a much larger project, it becomes something different. One of the larger challenges really is the cost to develop land, like the cost to service land. That has, probably for the town, I don't think, I don't think I need to quite say, point that out, that just the cost to do any infrastructure work is, yeah, that's high. That's the real big challenge, I think, for accessing and opening up more land. Specific, you know, development charges, I don't think it's, it never impacted the decision like on my way or the other.
Okay. Can I, can I ask a follow-up then? Because one of the things, one of the things our planner is, is looking at right now for us is taking a look at our subdivision bylaw. And within that bylaws where those development charges are. Now, I know, I think most of the property you've developed has had frontage on an existing public street. And, and that saves you those development, those development costs to a large extent. So do you have experience or an opinion on, on those development charges? And, you know, how, to, to what extent would you think we would need to tweak that in order to have developers look at, look at backlands, look at, look at opening a street and using the depth of lots rather than just what, what faces on, on our existing streets?
So I often joke about our sidewalk to nowhere on Sarah Corning Way, which is the cul-de-sac we built off of Hayley Road. And I understand there's sidewalks and, and the walking path being developed on Hayley Road. It's, those, the, are the most expensive lots we have of everything we own are the three that we built off the cul-de-sac of Sarah Corning Way. Because of the cost of developing and building the street. And so it's a challenge because basically it costs too much to develop roads and build the infrastructure. And, and it becomes a balancing act because if you start allowing, like, like I joke about the sidewalk on Sarah Corning Way. However, if you allow developers not to put sidewalks, 10 years' time from now, people start saying, hey, where's my sidewalk? Then you gotta go back and put the sidewalk in at a later date. And so it becomes more expensive at that point. And it's, it's a balancing act. I mean, for myself, I stopped looking at land where I had to put in infrastructure because of that, because I knew that it was going to be more expensive than anything else. So me sitting there as a developer, you know, sidewalks, curbs, basically anything beyond enough to get, you know, anything beyond sewer, water and paved roads, I don't want to do to bring the cost down, to make the projects more attractive. However, I also understand sort of those pressures of, you know, not wanting to have to go back, put that other infrastructure in in 10 years. So, so short-term, if there's a way to make it cheaper to develop, it would definitely increase people doing it. But I also can understand if that decision's not needed.
Yeah. So as, as a developer though, Andrew, in, in, and, and your actions have, have demonstrated is there's enough land that already faces on public open streets that are serviced that you're not motivated or incentivized in any way to, to take on that extra burden when you can find suitable alternatives. And so we have to, we have to wrestle with that one if we want the back parts of lots to not, to not be just grassland or, or what have you behind, behind property. If we want to fully develop and utilize our, our tax base, we have to find a way to, to get the infrastructure in there in a way that doesn't scare off developers.
Correct. Yeah. Which, which is just a challenge because it, you know, gets more expensive every year.
Appreciate that.
Counselor Lesser?
Hello. Do you think the cost of putting the sidewalks and streets in, on a larger scale development, having to absorb that cost at the beginning hinders it as opposed, like, if, if there were something, if there were a change in the bylaw, subdivision bylaw, that the town put the infrastructure in and if there were 20 properties, as you sold each property, you paid back a twentieth of, of the infrastructure as it sold? Would that, would that be an incentive for investors?
Yes. I think, and I think the biggest thing that that would do is it would open it up, which is sort of where my idea was coming from, is it would open it up to new developers or new, like, new people looking to get into the industry. Right? And do some projects. Like, so if the town had 20 lots, had developed 30 lots and sold off the lots individually, that would let somebody come in and buy one lot and test out the project and see how they do it. And you have to put, you know, covenants and all that sort of stuff on it, but there's definitely advantages that way. And I don't, you know, one of the, I, I think one of the common counterarguments to that is that, you know, municipal governments shouldn't be into, shouldn't be competing with private sector on developing land or anything like that. And I don't know if you would be. Right? Like, because I don't know if there is anybody. So I think there's definitely something there to help increase development and get, like I said, I think there's something to push for getting new, new people into the industry because I think, like, I haven't figured out what the exact percentage would be, but I think for what's been developed in Yarmouth over the last 10 years, we've probably done probably 70 to 80% of it. And I'm not sure if we're gonna do much more. So it's kind of replacing what we've been doing. And so it's kind of developing the next person to come in, to step up and start building apartments or building houses or something like that. And so I think there's definitely something, you know, that the town can, can do to help on that, having that infrastructure in place.
Good. Any more questions? I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have a few later, but I'll, I'll find you.
No problem.
Thank you, Andrew, for stopping by and sharing all that information. And we have your contact, so we'll get ahold of you as questions arise. And we appreciate everything you've done. Take care. Okay. Staff report, CAO report. Is there anything on there for the CAO? Any questions, concerns? Fire department report? And, oh, sorry. I don't know what's, what is that? Do we know? Okay, deputy?
I see on the CAO report, there's fire reading service. I know that we're getting our fire department greeted or whatnot. I'm just wondering timeline for that?
Yeah, so we, we engaged Underwriters Laboratories to, to do an assessment of our fire service, and we began that process before COVID. The issue that they have is that they don't have anybody in Nova Scotia who can put feet on the ground in our community to finish that work. And so we
And so we gave them a pause. We put things on pause to see how things went with, with COVID and closed borders and quarantine rules and so on. Now, we, we know that, uh, there's talk about the Atlantic Bubble being formed again, uh, next month. Uh, they do have people in New Brunswick who may be able to complete that work and come in and, and do the, do the groundwork in Yarmouth. The acting chief, Mike Devoo, is here and he's had the most recent conversation with them, so. Maybe he can pick it up from there, but that's where I believe we are right now is, um, maybe within a month or, or so of having somebody. In our community to hopefully, uh, finish that work.
Thank you.
Good. Anything else for the C O? Okay, fire department report, status update. So. Mike's here. I don't know if Mike wanted to come up.
Fire, I guess.
Piece of cake.
Um, what, what information you're looking for specifically?
It just, it says status update here. There were, did you have questions, Warren? Go ahead, C O.
So your worship, um, uh, Counselor Dares had provided, uh, some questions. Uh, ahead of time for, for Mike and, uh, to, to give some thought to in terms of what he might have to offer. Uh, I don't know if you have a copy of those questions with you, Mike? If you do, maybe to walk down through those and see where that gets us.
Um, do you wanna broach the rationale for the fire policy advisory committee? Do you want me to handle that?
Sure, I'll, I'll go ahead on that one. Okay, so thank you, Mike. So the first question was why, uh, what the rationale is for not having a fire policy advisory committee? So the town of Yarmouth used to have a fire policy advisory committee up until about, uh, ten years ago. The fire policy advisory committee, uh, met periodically, uh, to deal with issues of policy that the fire chief. Uh, would bring, would bring forward as the chief advisor. Uh, the fire chief was attending committee of the whole. We had had a committee of the whole system in place for, uh, about a. Half a term of council by that time. And, uh, the effectively the committee of the whole serves the purpose of allowing the fire chief to bring matters forward to council. And for council, uh, sort of for committee of the whole to then recommend to council. And so we've not continued to have the committee. I guess, uh, maybe that answers the question.
And in effect, we are the committee.
That's right. Uh, so when, when committee of the whole was brought in, we replaced at that time five other committees of council. I can name two of them off the top of my head. We had a finance committee. We had a public works committee. And, uh, they were effectively this group. And there were three other committees at the time that we, that we melded into, into the, uh, committee of the whole. The fire policy is kind of a sixth of that and I'm sure there are others that we have, we have phased out over, over time and, and just bring those. Policy items back straight to committee of the whole. So, um, that, that's the history, uh, as I recall it.
Thank you.
Next question that was posed to me was, uh, when were the last flow test completed and what the process is used to perform the test? Um, I'm assuming that was in respect to fire apparatus specifically. Um, th- those tests are done, uh, by, uh, a, uh, company out of, uh, New Brunswick. They are done for NFPA standards. We are currently looking to use a more local company. Um, they can come to our facility and it keeps the apparatus, uh, in service more efficiently. Uh, the underwriter survey, I guess we broached that already, so we're good. It was last done under Ken Kelly, um, and we're currently working on having this done again. So, just like, uh. Jeff mentioned that, uh, you know, COVID has made a little bit of a challenge.
So I'll just interject in here in case anybody doesn't maybe understand Underwriters Laboratories. And, and their role in the insurance industry. So they, they rate fire services across the country by, by community. And they provide their information to the insurance companies so that they can set, uh, your fire rates that you pay on your, on your home or business insurance. And so, um, you know, the last time that they were invited into our community to do a concentrated look. Was, was back in the day that Ken Kelly was the, was the chief. Now, we, um, recently invited them in to, to do that again for a couple of reasons is, is not only will it potentially benefit our residents in terms of having a. A clear view of what our fire service, uh, can provide and, and ultimately hopefully bring down, uh, uh, insurance rates. But for us corporately, what it gives us is, is a rating on our fire services. You know, on our, our personnel, our training, our, our water system and how adequate it is and, uh, and the apparatus and we get a rating. And then if council is interested in, in maintaining that rating, then, you know, we, we do that. If you want to improve that rating. Then there will be, uh, clear indications of how we can do that. So the purpose of the, of the report, you know, it would be passed to the chief, passed to council. And, uh, and then, you know, we get into, into planning. It's a question of where do you wanna go from here? Maintain or improve? And, uh, and then of course there's budget allocations that would have to go with that to, to move the needle if that's where we wanna go. So that's who they are and they do this as a consulting service in addition to what they do for the insurance industry. And, uh, so there's, there's a couple of benefits to having them come in.
Correct. Essentially. What it boils down to, you know, as well as the fact that your apparatus needs to pump a certain amount of water. We need to provide a certain amount of water on the apparatus to a fire. We have a, we need a certain number of amounts of apparatus, equipment, P P E, personnel, uh, you know, volunteer staff to, to attain. The level that we're at right now. Question that was asked was who sets the standard for the fire department? The apparatus, the tools, the appliances, bunker gear, staffing levels, et cetera. Essentially that's the chief. So currently that's me. Uh, I work with my platoon chiefs as well as I get input from the staff. So essentially the chief needs oversight of all these things in the end. Number of personnel that's on the first duty truck to an emergency is currently two. We have two career staff on twenty-four hour shifts, four shifts of two. Uh, what is the NFPA standard response, response for in regards to personnel and apparatus? Uh, that standard per NFPA is four. What we need to remember is that NFPA is a guideline. Okay, it's, uh, the NFPA sets forth a gu- a guideline for us to, as a benchmark. We need to remember that our career staff and our volunteer staff provide a world la- world-class service for our community. And we get to the scene within fifteen minutes earlier than other volunteer firefighters in the province. We're one of only three other career fa- services in the, in the, in this province. So, you know, we're, we're a bit of an anomaly. Um, for a town our size, a community our size, we're, we're very well served by the, 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 the career staff and the volunteer staff that we have. Another question is number of volunteers in the department at this time. I have twenty-six volunteers. I have one on leave of absence. Um, I might add that I have five female fully qualified firefighters in my fire department. Uh, we're working on a more forward-thinking process. Uh, we can thank John Verrill for that. He helped us get to where we are and I'm keeping the momentum going. This year I'm actively working with, with Mike Carter and Wade. Uh, we're working on recruitment program. It's gonna be a year long. It's gonna be an education slash recruitment program. The idea is to educate the public and businesses as to why we need volunteers. And, you know, what, why, why we need our businesses to support that model. You know, through this, you know, I, I don't wanna attach a number, but, you know, I'm hopeful that we'll get somewhere in the area of ten volunteers. We're, we're well-served with the twenty-six that we have. Uh, like every year of volunteer service, we're, we, we do struggle a bit to get volunteers. Uh, we're not alone in that, but we are, you know, very fortunate to have our career staff to augment that process. And, uh, I've just recently attained. Three, uh, members that have retired from service. They had gotten out. They're my age, so. That's debatable if we're old or not, but anyway, uh, they're, they're, they're level-one train certified guys. I've reappointed, uh, four captains within my, within my service. Um, it, it's, uh, we needed to reinstate those positions to help solidify, uh, sa- the command on scene. Help augment, uh, the, the platoon chief and myself. We have twenty, yeah, twenty-one that are trained to do attack. So, uh, attack and, and rescue. So out of the twenty-six, we have twenty-one trained that, or, or that currently do attack, but I, I might, I might say that. All those twenty-six do have level one, at least the minimum standard of level one certification. Of the day. So it's, you gotta kinda com- compare it to, I'm a licensed automotive technician. I'm a red seal mechanic. I got my certification in two thousand and four, but my certification is no less qualified than a person that got certified this year. Okay, so we do have some, some senior firefighters, you know, that some of them got their certification fifty years ago. Uh, you know, we, we don't put them in buildings anymore, obviously, but they are trained and qualified and they do bring a lot to the table. Um, the question was posed to me, the average number of staff and volunteers that attend fires. Um, I had to put that percentages. It's really hard to do it any other way. So, um. Of course, we always have two staff on a scene and our, our volunteers average sixty-four percent attendance. So that's, that's quite reasonable. Um, you know, we're always looking to improve that, but, you know. We ask a lot of our volunteers. We ask them a lot of training. Uh, you know, we get up in the middle of the night. We fight fire all night. Uh, sometimes we get a shower before we go to work and sometimes we don't. So, um, along with that, uh, you know, we have training and meetings. Um, the volunteers attend seventy percent, seventy-six percent of meetings. And that's likely because, you know, they can plan for that. They can plan for the time off work. Uh, training is sixty-eight percent. Um, we're working on that. I might add that, uh, I, I've recently, uh. Gotten all my career staff on board that they are helping us with the training moving forward, mandated that they will be helping train. It's gonna help create a more cohesive environment for everybody. Um, you know, my, my career staff are what we call in my other, in the, in my other industry, which is a wind turbine technician. They're SMEs, they're subject matter experts. So they're the, they're the eyes and the ears, um, along with myself. When we're on a fire scene, we can see. What's going on, where deficiencies are and where we need to improve. Um, we're also gonna get back to where we're root, or we have been getting back to our grassroots. Uh, you know, making sure that we, we are, are competent and continue to be competent in, in our. Tasks that we perform most often, you know, uh, search and rescue, uh, you know, fire attack, that sorts of things. Um, there was a time that we were in all kinds of things like hazmat. Um, we've had to downgrade our ability as hazmat teams because it's, it's a demanding part of what we do. We still do some hazmat work, but we're at decreased level. And it was asked to me why, or estimate the amount of time it takes for a fire to double in size. Uh, it can take as little as thirty seconds depending on, you know, heat, oxygen and fuel. Um, and, you know, the other dynamic that we now call a fire tetrahedron is, uh, the, the chemical reaction. So depending on those things, it's as little as thirty seconds. And then how long to take for room to become fully involved? Depending on, on the fire tetrahedron, it's as little as three minutes, two and a half, three minutes, depending on the fuel in the room, the amount of oxygen and the heat. And, uh, I guess that, that's pretty much all I have for questions except for one more, which I expect to pop up. Any questions?
Questions? Go ahead, Counselor Dares.
Uh, thank you, chief. Um, it's, some of those questions obviously were mine and others were questions that were posed to me. Um, I very much appreciate your, uh, your being here today and your responses. Um, and I'm also very glad to hear that there's a plan of action for recruiting additional volunteers. Because I think that, uh, when I think back to my, my arrival in Yarmouth, we were working at the fire hall, um, with the R C and P detachment there. I think the, the volunteer, uh, roster was pretty, pretty robust. Uh, so I'm glad to hear there's a plan of action. Is there any issue in getting second pieces of apparatus to the scene? I know you roll with the first two paid firefighters. Um, but is there any concerns about how long it is to get a driver for the additional apparatus?
We, we have had in the past, yes. Um, mostly due to the dynamics of, of the decrease of, uh, firefighters, volunteers. Um, you know, it, it takes a, a, a person that really wants to drive an apparatus to, to get to that level. Oddly enough, I was one of those people. Uh, but. We, we are working and have worked towards getting that back to a reasonable level. Um, we've recently put, uh, a few drivers behind the wheel. And we're, we're doing, uh, what's called a CVO course, uh, which is a firefighting driver training course headed up by my, my training officer, uh, platoon chief Peter Winship. So, um, as of late, uh, the past couple of months, three or four months, that, that's improved a lot. Um, I, I've never, I can't say that we've ever put the community at risk by, by our, our, uh, our response times. You know, we're, we're, we're pretty proficient in what we do and, uh, we, we were used to working under duress. So it's, it's always something we have to continually improve and, and we are working on that as well. Hopefully that, that ends your question.
Your worship, may I follow up? Uh, just another, uh, I've got a long history of affiliation with fire service, so it, it's very near and dear to me. And, uh, I can tell you that it was extremely frustrating for me the other night when I saw the apparatus heading out to Chicago. Only to turn around fifteen minutes later or less and head to Shabogue. And, um, you know, I, I, it's frustrating for me to think what you. What you pe- your, your service has to go through. I want you to know that if there's anything else that council can do to support you, um, I'll push it. And thank you very much for your comments. Good information. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Um. The, the, I, I'm, you're responding, you're questioning the, the fire, grass fires specifically, right? Um, that is something we're working on this year. Um, I, I've done a couple of, uh, uh, interviews. With, with the, uh, the radio stations and, and we're, we're working on improving that. Um, we're working with natural resources. Um, we are working towards ticketing more people. We, we need to draw a line in the sand. So, uh, this year is that year we've begun that process.
Deputy?
Thank you for the job that you do and, uh, as Counselor Dare said, I think we're all here to support in any way we can, so won't be scared to reach out. But, um, I just wondered about training itself out back of the fire hall. I know there's some apparatuses and whatnot there. Are they? Out of date? Do you still use those? How often are they used?
That, that depends on the season. Um, depending on the time of year, we have to change the way we train. Um, we, we don't negate, you know, to keep our skills up, but depending on the season, we have to, you know, change that. Um, we, we do have that building out back and we've recently purchased more, uh, equipment that, that augments that for training. Uh, Peter Winship, my training officer, just purchased, uh, some training for, for roof entry to cut holes in the roof and, and then those sorts of things. Um, we, we, we just purchased a, a, a door trainer. It's how to open, uh, you know, doors and such. So that equipment is being used, uh, when it's pertinent and we're gonna, we're continuing to modify that process and add to it.
Thank you.
Good. Any more questions for the chief? Thank you for that. Good staff.
Okay. Thank you.
Operational services report and Chad's here. Did I see Chad? He's back here somewhere. There he is. Questions for Chad? I have one. Lake Milo, every year for eight years at this time of the year, I get the letter from a certain gentleman asking. Why are we, why is there no water going over the dam because it's kayak season?
It's been a dry spring, I guess. We, we monitor and regulate the dam. Um. I don't think we've opened it recently. Um, it's a bit of a balancing act. We, we have to maintain a certain flow over the dam for, for the kayak season. Um, but we're also cognizant of the fact that we have a lot of properties on the, on the lake that will flood during heavy rain events, so. But I don't believe, I think we may have opened it a foot, uh, and that was only temporarily in the last month and a half, so.
Okay. I'm, I'll, I'll respond to that. Um. I'll respond to that.
Yeah, and just, just forward any of those requests or complaints or inquiries in my way if you'd like.
Certainly. Okay, Counselor Weser?
Hi. It wouldn't be a regular committee of the whole if I didn't bring up crosswalks, sidewalks and stop signs. Um, I appreciate the work you do, by the way. I know I'm challenging more all the time, but I was actually, it was number six that I, on the report that I was happy to see. Um, I was in favor of a nice stop sign going up, but, um, I, yeah, I think it's, I think that. Uh, says the investigation of installation of a four-way stop at Parade Street and Haley Road. Um, and that work sounds, sounds quite promising. Hopefully that will make it. I have to go back to, I have to go back to. I have to go back to, I have to go back to the Water Street one, just because I had a question today, which probably never made it to you, but there was a request came in from a resident, I guess, last, just before last committee of the whole, and she said she had not received the response, she had some specific questions around how much has been monitored, I don't, I don't know if that even made it to you, but
No, did not.
Wondering when, what time of day it was monitored, and I think the other question was, she was questioning around the parking, or the crosswalk between the fish plant and duly, and wondering what, what would warrant that one versus this one, but I don't think that, those questions probably didn't make it to you, and that's what I explained to her, but I don't, I don't think any of us have, have responded to that, those questions, so, thank you.
Yeah, I, I didn't get, I didn't get the question yet about what time of day we've monitored, generally, we monitor pedestrian and vehicle activities during the three peak periods of the day, which are normally, you know, the morning commute, noon time, and the afternoon commute, and that's a good question about what warranted the crosswalk near the fish plant, and that's why I may take, it may seem like I'm taking a long time to, to make these decisions, but it's gonna be hard for us to make a decision to install a crosswalk, and not make the same type of decision in the future, so, but if you, if you'd like, give her my, my contact information, and I'll gladly have the conversation with
Or forward it, sometimes we don't, it goes in our junk, right?
Right.
Because we try to get back right away, or either we try to get back right away, or I always forward them to Chad, so it could be in my junk.
No, your worship, that was my bad.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I had it, I just sent it to him, and I explained to Derek.
Good stuff, okay, go ahead, oh, wait a second, can you, can, is he okay?
Oh, yes, by me.
Yep, go ahead.
Sorry, just, just a follow-up on that, I also, just for the record, do not park across the street, I have no vested interest in walking across there on purpose, I park kind of right in front of the building, and I just, I just hear the complaints on a regular basis, and, and I know it's easy access for them, because I'm working in that building, but, you know, I did say I would bring, I would continue to bring it up as, as they requested, so, thanks.
And just for the record, I was, I was monitoring the roadway the other day, and I did, I wouldn't call it a near miss, but I, I did watch a woman try to cross the road from the school board office side, and there is a bit of a blind spot there, especially when they're trying to cross the street, there's parked vehicles along the east side of the street, so I understand the concern.
Good.
Thank you, your worship. Chad, actually, my question is about the transit, I just, it's, it's, I just noticed how drastic the drop in ridership was from one February to the other February, and I'm just wondering, can I assume that that's because of what's been happening with the pandemic? Has it been a drastic drop in ridership on the transit since?
Yeah, I would suggest it's, it's, it's related to the pandemic, I think during the height of the pandemic, I think people find alt, found alternate ways to, to get around town, I don't think we're seeing much activity like to and from the hospital. We haven't really polled our, our riders, but I can certainly reach out to the, to the transit drivers, and maybe see what, what they're hearing from the passengers.
Just kinda curious, thank you very much, thanks.
Good, Councilor McLeod?
I appreciate Chad, your report, and my occasional message to you, to let you know there's an item somewhere to be looked after. Number three in your report today, I saw town staff up there, actually, working on corner summer in Chestnut Street.
Yes, yeah.
They're up there today, yeah, so that's, that's a busy spot up there with, and not enough parking, right?
Yeah, and I think that's the issue, there's not really sufficient parking for the, for the medical center.
Thanks again, staff, for the report, and all the work that you and your staff do.
Thank you.
More questions, we're good, thank you, Chad. Planning and economic development, Natalie's here, and Reese's here as well. Any questions for Natalie, there's lots going on there, or did you have anything you wanted to share, Natalie, in particular?
No.
Okay, so we're good, okay, go ahead, Councilor McLeod?
I, I just wanted to say that over the past year or so, since we started our term, that the reporting of, and the reorganization of our planning department is wonderful, and it's, the report today and last month, very detailed, and makes it easy to ask questions, and, and so, thanks to you and Reese, who is here, and I meet with him irregularly, and enjoy the moment, so keep it up, and I'll never be able to keep up with you guys now, you're way ahead of me. But I'm, I'm interested in what I think Jeff alluded to earlier during Andrew Cameron's presentation, I, I do want to, and I know I alluded to Reese about that, I do want to find areas of, of development, both affordable and otherwise, and, and we, it's very difficult, I know it costs money, I know there's a formula that I think that Reese mentioned to me, that we can start out and maybe end up where we could find a way to build more housing, affordable and otherwise. We're gonna get fifty, fifty, or twenty-five affordable units in the new, in the old high school, yeah, so that's, and I had an email, I think I forwarded to you people, I'm not sure, to, to Jeff and to yourself, Natalie, that, that they're in town, or have been in town, and, and looking at that building, so, so I'm looking forward to the change in my Sunday morning walk up by the high school.
Councilor Hatfield?
Hi, Natalie, can you just update us on what's happening with the mural program?
Sure, the chair of the facade society, I think, has requested to be on the agenda in April to do a full update.
Oh, okay, great.
But I, I'd just quickly say that, one for sure, and there's another one where it's a great project, but the challenge is finding a building owner to say yes, so our challenge is not in the art part, but it's the property part.
Go ahead, Councilor Wester?
Natalie, is there, is there a map anywhere of land that's undeveloped, what it's zoned at, and who might own it, or is that, like, I know that's quite a bit in there, but I'm thinking, like, quite often, if I'm out driving, I'm thinking, what a great lot to develop, and I'm thinking, I don't know who owns it, I don't know what it's zoned, and obviously, I don't, I can't afford to buy it and do it myself, but I'm thinking there's some, some great property in town that could be possibly developed if it was zoned right, and then trying to figure out who owns it, I think, I think Viewpoint probably says who owns it, I'm guessing, maybe not, okay, anyway, I just didn't know if something like that exists, and I know there is a map, I think Deputy Mayor had said there's one on zoning, where property is zoned, but I just didn't know if something existed that would help any developer who wanted to come here, figure out who I need to approach to buy land that can be developed for the purpose of development.
Right, so number one, thank you for the question, number one is, they can, they contact our offices, and typically, when a site selector developer is looking to develop in our area, they would contact us first, generally, they have some idea of where they wanna be, they've done some preliminary homework, and then we guide them through that process about where and options, because sometimes it could be zoned medium density, or even high density, but they need some guidance with regards to development agreement versus other things, so we guide them, so the best thing is for them to be directed to us, because it's a little bit more complicated than a simple zoning, you have to look at, is it a collector's street or not, so there's a bunch of questions that the planning team looks at, so, so I think it's probably better for them to come to us.
Go ahead, CAO?
Yeah, just on the property ownership question, that information is not generally available publicly, that's one of the things, I mean, that's the only reason it isn't available on Viewpoint, because they, they have a lot of data on their site, I know Greg, if you have any insight into that, but that's just a privacy issue, as far as I know.
Good, any more questions for Natalie? Good staff, thank you. Okay, engineering, and I believe Mark's here, and there's your list of projects, she's a long, there's only one closed out, close out. Okay, any questions for Mark? Anything you wanna share there, Mr. Engineer?
You're good?
Our list is a little shorter this year, but we're ready to start in a few weeks.
Awesome, that's not a short list, by the way, but, good staff, thank you. Finance, Jerry, you must have something for us.
Just wanna remind our engineer, we have no money to spend on capital, so, I think I should go and finally have him from now on.
I love it.
No, seriously, that's the one thing that I do have, is a request to you, that we schedule our, our first meeting for budgets, and it'd be on the capital budget, so I know Mark and Chad have been bugging me to get the capital budget approved by you folks, so they can get moving on, on the projects for the summer, so that request, other than that, we're business as usual, a week away from year end, so, audit preparations already started, trying to go through all that, those processes again.
So here's, here's a question, not a question, maybe a request, that we all get together for budget, and we get the binder, can we have the binder a few days before?
For sure.
It's just hard to, you know, go through every page unless you've had time to kinda look at it, and see where we are.
The binder right now is about fifty percent complete for my copy, that I'll go through, Jeff, and right now, with the all-in requests, we have a little bit of a, an issue to deal with for, for the operational side, but the capital budget, let's say, I've worked with the directors, I think we're, we're at a spot now where we should bring that to council as soon as we can, and just get approval on that piece.
Okay, go ahead, CAO?
So, your worship, as, as the Director of Finance has indicated, if council was wishing, was willing to have a special committee of the whole meeting, perhaps next week, just to deal with the capital budget, it won't be a long, long meeting, but it will be, it will need some time, sometime in the middle of next week, or towards the end of next week, we can get the information out to you ahead of time, and would allow you to make a recommendation to council for the, for the following week, and we can get the capital budget approved, and Mark's tenders out.
Awesome, good, any, go ahead there, Jim, sorry.
Jeff and Jerry, I just have a question indirectly related to the, to budget and the operations and the capital, how close are we to actually signing the agreement and the transfer of money for the high school, and, and, or for the project, and which would reduce our maintenance, ongoing maintenance costs, and similarly, with the, with the Boys and Girls Club and the Yarmouth South Centennial Building, I just was, because I, I know Jerry has the budget for that, and the cost of operations, so I'm, I'm just, plus the manpower required to check it every friggin' day, to make sure that it's, doesn't deteriorate as quickly as it would otherwise.
So let's add, let's add those to the in-camera piece, and we'll get you your answers, is that okay? That's appropriate, yeah, that's appropriate. Anything else for Jerry? Good, good, thanks, Jerry, find us some money. Yarmouth Recreation, Frank's here, any questions on Frank's? Did you add that Yarmouth to Yarmouth on there, you probably sent this in before?
Yarmouth to Yarmouth, just a, a brand-new walking initiative, kinda piggybacking on top of Walk Fundy, which we had over a hundred participants, walking challenge, counting steps, so we're partnering with Yarmouth Maine, to do a little walking challenge, we've, made contact with the recreation department there.
Oh, you did, because I sent a note to the mayor.
And Mayor Mood has reached out to the mayor in Yarmouth Maine, and they're sending us some swag, so we're gonna send them some swag, and they're gonna reciprocate and do the same challenge.
Excellent.
So we'll have Yarmouth to Yarmouth people walking virtually from Maine to Nova Scotia.
Perfect, good, questions for Frank, go ahead there, deputy? Hang on a second, we're in my hole, sorry, Steve, that's my fault. Councilor Hatfield, no, it's your light came on first, so you were in the queue first.
Frank, I was really glad to see the Yarmouth to Yarmouth project happening, I had seen this winter sometime, I think we're, I think it was during the winter, that Amherst had done, and Amherst to Amherst, and they had done several different Amhersts, one in the States, and one in England or something, and, and they had taken on it, and people actually developed friendships through that, right, because there was lots of contacts with the, with the walkers in the different areas, so, so I was really glad to see you guys picked up on that, that was great.
Yeah, we signed up for it, didn't we? Go ahead, deputy.
I think all councilors are signing up for it, aren't they?
Ooh, I don't know, we'll have to check that.
Jim would, Jim would be a neat one to count up, his stuff.
We're not count, we're not counting, we're not counting Jim.
I'm just wondering where we are with the lights for the South End Playground, I've got a lot of kids at school that are getting hyper with the, the new, or the, the new weather, I guess, and the better temperatures, so just wondering if that's been looked into or moved forward at all with spring coming?
That might be a question for Chad.
South End Playground.
Thank you.
Good, anything else for Frank, we're good? Alrighty. Okay, business, outdoor classroom community space, Councilor Dairs?
Thank you, so just a very quick update, as you know, this is the initiative of the School Advisory Council of Meadowfields Community School, in partnership with Rotary Club in Yarmouth, and so basically, we're working right now with Cobbequid Playgrounds to try to, to develop a design that would feature, what's being recommended, I think, is sort of an outdoor bowl situation, bowl seating for lectures, concerts, that sort of thing, or classroom instruction, as well as a covered roof structure, an open roof structure, so it's in the early, very early stages, and they're looking at grant opportunities as well. I thought it might be appropriate, only because the town parks were, look after the, the mowing and the, the maintenance of the park, it might be appropriate to have a motion passed that council would acknowledge and authorize the outdoor facility at Rotary Park.
So, yeah, whatever, whatever you think, by way of motion, but who, who owns the park? We own it, but we lease it, or we lease it to the Rotary Club, and then who pays for this park? Who's gonna pay for all that?
Now, this is basically gonna be an initiative of the, the two, the Meadowfield School and the Rotary Club, and we'll be seeking funding through grants.
Okay.
And fundraising.
Right on.
Gil, would you just repeat, I did catch the end of the motion that you want to make, just repeat the motion again, please?
I just wanted, because of the, it's owned by the town, but I think there's a partnership with Rotary, an affiliation with Rotary Club, that they do a lot of the work up there, so I thought, just thought it would be appropriate to have a motion that town acknowledge the work that's being done, and authorize it.
So can we do that, under our contract?
Yeah, I haven't looked at that contract in a long time, but I don't imagine it's an issue, but I should look at the contract, I haven't, I'll admit, I haven't seen the concept for the, for this project, but I don't know if Todd has seen it, or been part of that process at all.
Todd's been informed, I don't know if he's seen anything on written writing yet.
So, I, we probably should look at the, at the lease, it's a lease to the Rotary Club, is the way that is structured, they approached the town. They approached the town probably twenty years ago or more to lease that and develop the Millennium Park, which, which is what it is today. But I don't have any current memory of what the contents of that lease are, is, in terms of development rights.
So maybe the motion is to direct staff to look at the contract and bring it back to council, I guess? We want to get this done fast.
Yeah, we, there's no rush. I just thought, I don't think there's any rush in this.
All right. Do you want a motion, Jeff? You do. Motion, so the motion is to direct staff to look at the contract for this initiative and get back to council. You make that motion?
I do, thank you.
Okay? Second by.
So I'll, my question is, I want to make sure that Rotary Club is involved in the project.
It's their project, I think.
Yeah, Rotary Club was very, very appreciative of the, of the invite. This started out as an outdoor class and project on the Meadowfield School property, and it morphed into something that would serve the greater community. So we felt that if it was in Rotary Park, which is, which is a grossly underutilized piece of property, we felt that it might increase the usage by the community of that particular park and, and also provide the community with a, with a venue that they could hope, you know, seniors could get together, garden clubs, any, any groups could get together. There's, the suggestion is an amphitheater, like an outdoor amphitheater, and then a structure, like you say, a roofed-in structure, to provide some protection from the elements. And. Sorry. We're in the very early stages. You know, it's, what do we need there, what would best work? But Rotary is completely invested in it. They, they took up the challenge immediately and said that they've been looking for some way to draw attention to the park. One of the, the good things about that location is that throughout the summer months, of course, school's not in, so there's all kinds of adequate parking. So it's dual use.
The Rotary Club needs a project, and I grew up on Prospect Street, next, or next door to the Reservoir in eighteen sixty-one, I think. Anyway, I support it.
Okay, so moved and seconded, any discussion?
Question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Thanks, folks. Class request for decision, council meeting start time. So the recommendation there, you know, we always start at, at seven-thirty. We would like to move it back to six-thirty, and I understand that any public hearing would be part of that, starting at six-thirty. CAO? So we're not going to come back in at six for a public hearing. It would, it would be the public hearing followed by the council meeting, all, all in one. Go ahead, CAO.
Actually, it would be just a council meeting, and an agenda item on the council meeting would be the public hearing. So you would call your council meeting to order at six-thirty every month, and under business arising, it would be a public hearing. So that would be the opportunity, as we've done for other bylaws over the years. Anyone wishing to speak to the bylaw would, the bylaw amendment would come forward. You would hear them, and then your next agenda item would be to consider second reading. So it would be, instead of two separate meetings, all incorporated under the single agenda. And I'd asked Lindsay to do a little bit of work to look across the province at what other municipalities do. And it's very common that towns our size who have a fair number of amendments incorporate the public hearing directly in the council agenda. In fact, we probably found more of those than we did that do it the way we do it.
And seven-thirty's late. It's getting late, you know, so. Okay. So the, the motion is that staff be directed to repair an amendment to the council meeting's bylaw that would change the start time of the regular council meetings from seven-thirty to six-thirty. Who wants to make that motion? Deputy, second. Yeah, go, Counselor Dairs. Go ahead, Counselor.
Just quickly, in the very short time that I've been here, it's always amazed me that we have a public hearing set for seven and we're done at seven-oh-four. And then we sit here and look at each other for twenty-five minutes, so I'm glad to see this is moving forward. Thank you.
And to that point, what we used to do was finish at seven-oh-four, or whatever, and then go into the chamber here and have our in-camera, so that would cut off the other end. But we can't, we can't gather in there because it's too close quarters and we can't ask everybody to leave. So, so this is a good, yeah. And you know what? My first year, we were here till like eleven o'clock at night sometime, so. No, we were. That's not going to, that's not going to happen. When you do your homework and you're ready, we're good to go.
So we moved and seconded, call for a question, your worship?
Oh, yes. Would you like to call for the question?
Question, your worship.
Good job. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. I just had to, this is asking me to, to schedule my shutdown or something. Okay, deer population. I don't know who put that on. Deputy? Go ahead.
Just, you know, there's a lot of deer in town, and it's the same thing. We had people in to present, and I, I don't think we've had any action piece from it. I believe they kind of left it with us and said if we could do some type of survey so they could get numbers, databases or whatnot, and I just think, you know, here we are, the nice, nice weather's coming, they're going to be in lawns, eating the hostas, and, you know, doing all that stuff. So anything we can do to kind of move that forward, if we need to start keeping numbers or whatnot, just, you know, just some action on it, I guess.
Got a couple of sick dogs, too.
Yeah, the tick thing and the law.
So, so, oh, go ahead. I was going to say something. You go right there. I was going to say, we have, did we get an email about a gentleman, from a gentleman that just took over? That position? And, yeah, I'm just thinking maybe if he came back in.
So, your worship, the last time we had a representative in from Natural Resources or Lands and Forestry, it is now, the advice from them was to do a, to recruit citizens and to do a deer population survey. And I can tell you the town of Truro did that. And what that entails is, is counting deer pellets. So where there are deer, there are deer pellets. And if you count the deer pellets over, over time and then do a year-over-year comparison, you can see or estimate, it's a proxy. It's a proxy. Sorry, it's a proxy for the change in the deer population. In Truro, when they did this process, and they did this process because they believed that an urban cull, first of all, is, an urban cull is, is the only proven effective means to reduce the urban deer population. There's other things you can try and do, but ultimately, they don't work. So an urban cull is what will reduce your deer population. Natural Resources were not willing to authorize an urban cull unless they were sure there was an urban deer problem. A way to prove there's an urban deer problem is to know what the population is and what the population growth is, hence the pellet counting. So we were advised, if we wanted to go down that road, that we should count, recruit volunteers and begin the population survey by counting pellets. On January fifth, there was an article, in, on January fifth, don't, don't. On January fifth, there was an article in the Chronicle Herald, in the provincial media, where Mayor Mills was, was very upset. And the reason he was upset is because they had recruited volunteers, done the work that had been required by Natural Resources, and had then requested, based on the evidence, an urban cull, and Natural Resources was not willing to authorize it. And so they felt that they were, they were led to down a course of action that in the end did not result in what they had needed in order to deal with their deer issue. The very next week, in the media, the town of Truro was calling a, a new citizens committee meeting to talk about the deer issue, and I don't have an update beyond that. The last time we talked about deer population at this table, we talked about it being, it is in fact, a provincial issue. It is not a Town of Yarmouth issue. This issue is an issue in every, every town across the province. Deer are coming into the towns, they're being invited in with carrots and apples and, and other goodies because they're, they're pretty animals. But at a certain point, pretty animals become a nuisance. And the, the issue we have is that Natural Resources does not take responsibility for the wildlife issue inside of towns. So they cover the entire province with their jurisdiction and their authority, except for within towns. It is now a town council issue. So we had referred this item to the Town Caucus of the NSFM as, as a town issue that we need the, the province to take responsibility for, since they have the expertise and, and we think perhaps, greater than us, the ability to, to deal with the issue. And so that's where we, we left it last.
Okay. So you, you said nuisance, it's not just a nuisance, it's a safety, it's a safety, health and safety thing, because now we've got people with lyme disease because they carry ticks. We've got pets that are sick from eating the pellets. You're so diplomatic. Okay, so who's got their light on? That would be you, Counselor McClabb.
I attended in the last council, I think, or maybe two councils ago, with the three, three councils and at Modi. And they denied the fact that they were, they couldn't do anything in the town at that time, you know, to help treat or solve the problem. Every morning, when I start my early morning walk at six-thirty and go up Grand and onto Brunswick, I run into an average of seven deer, three on Grand Street. Yesterday, they were within an arm's length on Grand Street. And similarly, they were even closer, almost closer, about the same on Brunswick Street, corner of Port or King and Brunswick. And you're never going to solve the problem, and I respect what everyone has said is trying to do. I don't know, and I, I'm going to support whatever motion we need to make it, to decrease the, the upset, the nuisance that it causes, but I don't see how you're going to change that. Thank you.
Counselor Cleveland?
Thank you, your worship. Where do I start? That is the most ridiculous thing I've heard, step one. It becomes extremely frustrating over time. And I've become extremely frustrated, because as you know, I've brought this up repeatedly over the last while. And, and I've asked for people from Resources to come, and whenever they come, they bring up these ridiculous, "We have to go count the deer" nonsense. And as you just pointed out, you, you get the feeling that what they're doing is putting us off. They're giving us an impossible task that they know we won't do, so they don't have to do anything. And as you gave as an example, somebody actually took their bluff, did something, and they still refused to do something. There has to be something, something has to be done about this. And perhaps the proper way to do it is through NSFM, because it seems that it's, nobody's listening to us. And I don't think Department of Resources is listening to any of the towns, and they're dismissing it out of hand. Tuesday night, I was ready to bring this up and actually realized, it was just afterwards that it came on the agenda. Tuesday night, I, I, I'm going to jam with a bunch of friends, going to sing. And I go Yarmouth North to a gentleman's home in one of the subdivisions. So I'm in the subdivision, we're in his music room in his basement, and there's a window that faces out onto the street. And while I'm singing, three deer walk down the middle of the road. They stop and look because they can hear the bass playing, thinking, isn't that great? I've got an audience. And I think it's kind of funny. Well, then I leave. It's, I don't know, eight-thirty or so. It's growing dark, but it's not dark yet. So I leave where I am, I'm heading through Brunswick Street Extension, and I'm, I'm heading towards home. On Brunswick Street on the side, I noticed a couple of deer. There's a couple more. Okay, so I turn, and I'm traveling down Pleasant Street, next to where Gateway Fuels is. There are two deer crossing the road there. So you stop and you let them cross, of course. I drive a little farther to where I live, which is on Albert Street. There's Park Street and Albert. On Forest Street, on the corner of Park and Albert, there are two more. It's gotten ridiculous. There are more deer than there are dogs, for heaven's sakes. It's, it's really a danger. And until the provincial government or the Department of Natural Resources can have it sink in that it is a danger, it's a danger to drivers, it's, it's a danger as far as health goes, as you mentioned, with lyme disease and those kind of things. I don't know how to get any further, but this is, this has got to be taken care of by somebody, whether it's us or someone else, I don't know. But it's become increasingly frustrated. And I think the most frustrating part of it is that nobody seems to listen or to care. And we really have to make some noise, and perhaps, perhaps the answer is the NSFM. Thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you. In hopes of finding a reasonable solution to this problem, I've been doing a lot of research and a lot of reading. There's, there's numerous reports online and studies, US Wildlife Service, right across Canada. There's extensive material available. And so far, reading through these things, the conclusion is that most humane methods, such as vaccines, sterilization vaccines and relocation, things like that, really, they're quite expensive, and sometimes they take years to produce results. And in some cases, the, the deer die anyway, so. It boils down to the research that I've done so far, and I'll continue to read, looking for something. But so far, it comes down to two things. You either have a controlled call, or you learn to live with them. And that may not be the, the answer that people want to hear, but that seems to be the, the only solutions available.
You know, we're.
Counting pellets, come to my front lawn.
Yeah, exactly.
Seven there the other night, so.
Yeah, my backyard, too. And it's, it's okay. They're really cute until somebody dies.
So.
That's the whole problem, right? Somebody has to lose their life before anybody says, "Please react." Right?
I'd, I'd really like to see, to hear somebody explain the strategy of counting pellets. Do you only count fresh pellets, or do you, like, I'm not sure how that works.
I'd like to, I'd like to understand, we're going down a little path. I'd like to understand why Natural Resources can't come into town. Like, we're at critical mass here. We're a house next to a house next to a house. We're, like, where else would you go to get rid of a problem, right? They belong out in the country, not, so, let's take care of the country deer where they belong, but don't touch them in town. That's really, that's bright, for lack of a better word. Okay, so what are we going to do? We want to invite that gentleman back in?
Sorry, I just want to, I want to agree with, with Counselor Cleveland. I think this is a problem that's bigger than the Town of Yarmouth, and I just, I think I forwarded you a picture the other day of fifteen deer running down the main boulevard in Bathurst. You know, somebody took a picture up in Cumberland County of a field with fifty deer. And so it is getting out of hand, and I think it's something that is, does warrant provincial attention.
It does need more attention. All right. What's your wishes there, Counselor?
Your worship, if I may.
Go ahead.
So i- is the Town Caucus active?
It can be, yes.
Because I think this is, this is a, a classic town issue, and, and maybe I'm wrong about that, because I know the District of Yarmouth and Argyle were, were concerned about this issue. But, you know, NSFM is our, is our best conduit to the province. Former Minister of Municipal Affairs Chuck Porter is now Minister of Lands and Forestry. And I know you have established communication with him. So I think there's a discussion that, that really should happen at a, at a provincial level, perhaps through NSFM and the Minister's Office, to talk about this issue and, you know, maybe resolve the, the barrier that Lands and Forestry has of coming into, into towns. And maybe they need to, to establish a, a priority to deal with this, this issue across the province.
Okay. So maybe I reach out to the Town's Caucus Chair, which I can just do, but if we do a motion, I'll be reminded. So the, the motion would be to, for the mayor to speak with the Town Caucus Chair with regard to bringing up the deer issue with the province. Okay, Counselor Lesser, second by Counselor Hatfield. Any more discussion on that, or are we okay on that one? For a start, for starters, okay? Questions called? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Eight D outdoor fires. Eight D outdoor fires. Councilor Lesser.
I know it's been, it's been brought up in previous councils about the use of fire pits in backyards. It seems like the requests are coming more and more for people that would like to have those. And, and I think somebody else had recently mentioned about, due to COVID and not being able to travel much, it gives people a little bit of reason to go outside and spend some time around a campfire. I'm not sure the method that could happen if we, I guess I'm not really sure what I'm looking for here other than, I know we've all heard people talk about wanting us to bring it up again for debate. And obviously there'd have to be whatever method, if you can, if we can do it, would have to be like a contained system of, like a chimney air or something like that. And I don't know the background, I don't know in previous councils, I don't, I don't know the debate that happened in the last previous councils, but I thought it would be worth bringing back and bringing it up for debate again and discussion.
So the chief, chief is here, did you want to start? Yeah.
There's a couple of things that come up for concerns with fire pits. One of them is enforcement issues. Now you'd have to set some standards, obviously. And then, of course, the Fire Department would have to enforce those standards. And there's some logistics involved there. The other thing is health issues. You know, a whole gamut of things come into play there. People, you know, we're all creatures of habit. We like to burn things. Chances are people are going to burn pop, you know, pop cans and garbage in them eventually. You know, the, the, the dynamics of, of houses being close within the town, depending where you are, there's not a whole lot of clearance. And, you know, if, if Mike is in his backyard and having a couple of drinks and has his, his little chimney air going, his neighbor, you know, probably has clothes in the line or is trying to sleep. And when, when, when it's warm in the summer, everyone has their windows open. And we're going to create a, a negative balance of issues, I think, if we allow burning within the town. Right now, we've got a pretty good standard. Everyone adheres to it reasonably well. But I still hear people complaining of people burning. And the issues I hear are, you know, the health issues, the nuisance issues. And, you know, that's where the bylaw that they're not supposed to be burning right now. People, you know, still do what, we're out there enforcing what we need to when we, when we hear about it. That's, that's the Fire Department's point of view. We have a no burn policy for a reason. It's my position that we should keep it that way.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, anybody, go ahead, CAO.
Yep, so I can provide, I know the last time this came up, Chief Farrell was still with us and he, he put together some documentation from the Canadian Council Ministers of the Environment on the topic, as well as some information from Health Canada. It's probably on our website, on an agenda several years ago, but I can, I can dig that up and Lindsay will have it to me before I'm, I stop talking. But we can probably find that and circulate it to council if you want that for bedtime reading. And, you know, it's, it was Chief Farrell's position. It's Mike's position that there are issues associated with this that will create challenges in the community and challenges for the Fire Department. At the end of the day, you know, council makes the decisions. It's, it's staff's job to give you, give you advice based on, on what our, our professional training or, or position is. Ultimately, you have to take that advice and determine if it's, if it's the right time and place for the advice you're receiving. Ultimately, you're, you're the decider and, and we respect that, of course. So we'll provide you with the information. There is not a preponderance, I'm sure I'm not saying that word right. There's not a lot of information out there that we'll find that will, will, will explain the, the benefits of, of having a backyard fire pit bylaw. But as was pointed out by Councilor Lesser, I think in an email, other towns, or maybe Councilor Dairs, there are other towns in the region that, and in the province that are as densely populated as ours, that have bylaws that under certain conditions and whatnot do allow for, for this. And so, you know, I think it's worthwhile to, to look at those if you haven't already. I'll send out the information that Chief Farrell put together. And if you want anything further from staff, you know, it's, it's just a matter of asking.
Go ahead.
So I guess the, at this point, for, for backyard, like, is there other options with, like, what does exist as an option? Is, is there an option for propane versus wood? And I guess, I don't, I'm not sure if everybody knows what is available. I, I actually don't know myself, so I'm just wondering.
So the, the bylaw is, is available on our website. And it does lay out that propane, electric, charcoal, these things are all, all acceptable. What isn't permitted is, is wood burning. And the, you know, obviously the things that the chief mentioned as well, you know, burning garbage or brush or yard waste, those things are not, are not permitted within the town.
Councilor Dairs?
Well, thank you. You know, at the end of the day, even if backyard fires were permitted, I would suggest to you that there's a lot of homes in the area that, that wouldn't qualify for a backyard fire pit if regulations were in place. I lived on Sprucewood Drive when I first came here. And, you know, I don't think that would be an appropriate place to have a backyard fire pit. However, those people living on Sprucewood Drive still have the option of having a propane unit. And that's what I have in my backyard is a propane unit. But I've looked at some of the bylaws in other jurisdictions and they very carefully describe what a fire pit must be made of, the dimensions, the size, the materials. They regulate, or it's in the regulations that the only thing that's, that's allowed to be burned is seasoned wood. So you're not allowed to burn brush or garbage. You must abide by the provincial fire regulations. So if it's a non-burn day, you can't burn. It can't create a nuisance. So any nuisance that's created would be reportable, reported to authorities. There must be minimum distances and I think that's where, when I mentioned Sprucewood Drive and areas like that, if there's a minimum distance and say it's 75 or 100 feet from the nearest residence, from your neighbor, then it eliminates some of the, the, those that are worried about close quarters. So not every property owner would, would be able to have a fire pit at any rate. They use permits, they regulate it with permits and charge a fee. And the fee is used to offset the cost of having an inspection of the, of the fire pit and the location. And that violations in some cases would result in the permanent suspension or suspension of the, of the permit, either temporarily or, or permanently. So I think it's worth taking a look at. I recall many years ago, when the outdoor, the ban on outdoor fires was first initiated and the, the rationale behind it was that people were burning brush and leaves. And, you know, I, I remember there was a chap on Brunswick Street who burned leaves in the ditch and they smoldered for days and days and days and the smoke filtered through the entire neighborhood. So the, the original burn ban was to control that problem. And at that time, in the, in the original bylaw, you were still allowed to have a fire for cooking purposes. So people would have a backyard fire and they'd have marshmallows or wieners next to them in case the police came by. But in, in those cases, those weren't designed fire pits. They didn't have a mesh screen over them, there was all kinds of problems. So I'm just wondering if it's worth considering, if we look at the, at what other communities have done. You know, because there, there are people out there that have large piece, large pieces of property that would like the opportunity to have an outdoor fire pit. So anyway, I'd, I offer that information. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we good? Any more questions or comments? Councilor Hatfield?
Yeah, I had looked at some of the regulations that some other towns in the province had put in place as well. And I guess my, my biggest concern with that, several big concerns, but one is the management of that. So you put in regulations, you put in rules, it has to be built of certain materials and with a screen, who is going to be out there regulating that? And that is going to be in the bits of our department. It will be a huge strain on the resources financially and manpower. And if one person can have a fire in their backyard, but I can't have a fire in my backyard because, because of size, then it, it causes a lot of problems. And will people understand that and uphold, you know, the rules around that? I just think it would be very confusing to people, whether they're allowed to or not. I also think of landlords, multi-unit buildings. So tenants are going to go out in the backyard and have a fire and you've got four tenants in the building. And are there four people going to want to go out and have four individual fires? And of course, obviously that can't occur. But how do you control that and regulate that? And I also think of the health issues with people with asthma, people with allergies, people with smoke, you know, COPD and, and that kind of thing. And how do you live next door to somebody? And how do you, you know, go to that person and say, I can't, you can't have a fire anymore because I have COPD? And what kind of a, a neighbor conflict that, that occurs? So I just don't know how you regulate all, all that. And people can have the propane outdoor fireplaces. You know, that's what I have in my backyard. And I know many people have them and they're, you know, they're, they're not as warm and cozy maybe as, as an outdoor fire, but they certainly are a replacement for that and something that has come out in the last few years, probably even more popular now since, than the last time this, this topic came up at, at council. So I think people are turning to, to those and enjoying them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Anyone else? Okay, we're good. Parade Street and Haley Road intersection. Go ahead, CAO.
Your Worship, the memo attached is from the, if I can open it up here, is from the Traffic Authority to myself, recommending installation of a four-way stop at the intersection of Parade and Haley Road. If everyone's had a chance to, to read the memo, I know Chad is still here. If you'd like to, if you had any questions or would like to speak to it. But he is recommending in the last paragraph, taking all this into consideration, I'm recommending a four-way stop at the intersection of Parade and Haley Road, as well as the installation of a crosswalk on Parade Street in line with the new multipurpose trail. Although not technically required, the crosswalk shall include painted street markings and ground-mounted signs.
Okay. Moved by Councilor McLeod, seconded by Councilor Lesser. Any discussion? I love the idea, I love the sidewalk idea, or the crosswalk because we have to do it anyway sooner or later. So we're extending that, so, okay. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Mariner Center Strategic Plan.
Your Worship, the strategic plan document developed by Mariner Center with your participation and the participation of the other funding partners is attached to the agenda. And what they're looking for is an endorsement of that plan so they can move forward with it. And I can report to you that last evening, the municipality District of Yarmouth did endorse this plan.
Okay, seconder? Seconded by deputy, go ahead there, Councilor Cleveland.
I just wanted to say that the process of putting this together was a, there were sessions twice, fairly long sessions, and it was really fantastic. It was very well done and was a, was a very exciting process. There's a, as you all know, there's a lot going on. And the next five years or so, which is what this, this covers, is going to see a complete change. It's, it's almost existential. There, everything in the nature of how things are going to be done at the Mariner Center is going to be different in some way, shape or form with the bridge and, and the way things are going to be kind of set up and, and talk of expansion and, and the way that things are going to be going. So I'm, I literally am beside myself with excitement about this. And one thing I would like to recommend, if, with your indulgence, if it's possible, is I would very much like to have our new C-CEO Duran come and actually present it at perhaps the next committee of the whole. As I think it would be, for the information of the general public, I think it would be very much worthwhile, if that's okay with, with council.
Yep, you can, after we do this motion, you make that motion to invite him and we'll, we'll vote on that, okay? Questions called on the first motion, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. And go ahead, Councilor.
All right, so I make a motion that we have the Mariner Center CEO, Duran Hadib, come and present to the Committee of the Whole and present both the results of the strategic plan survey that we did because we, we had an overwhelming response from the public and the plan itself.
Good. Seconded by deputy, any discussion on that? Questions called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Correspondence? There's, everybody's read that, I assume? And the additions, the only addition I had there was the fishery, fishery piece. Go ahead, CAO.
So Your Worship, council will remember that a few months ago, we participated with the other municipal units in southwestern Nova Scotia in engaging a communications consultant, Iris Communications. And that engagement was around the, the activity in our region around the lobster fishery. And there was some pressure on the municipal leaders to, to speak to that very complicated and, and difficult issue. And we, we engaged collectively, a communications firm to, to help monitor what was going on around the issue and to advise our leaders on, on statements that they might make publicly and activities they may undertake politically. So we've come to the end of, of that term of the contract. It is recommended by the CAOs that we engage the firm for a further three months period. The cost of the town of Yarmouth would be approximately $2,000. And so I'm recommending to, to you that, that we agree to that on the basis of, you know, the issue has not gone away. And, you know, I, I saw two things today that, that caused me to think that, you know, we may, we may have to, maybe called on for, for opinion or, or perspective again in the future. And I think it's fair to the mayor and fair to the other municipal leaders that they have good, sound advice on the issue and, and how to, how to respond to it.
Good. Okay, so the motion is that the town of Yarmouth continue to engage, be part of the process of engaging, what's the name again?
Iris Communications.
Iris Communications around the fisheries issue.
And the, the financial contribution is $2,100.
Twenty one, $2,100. Okay, Councilor Cleveland, seconded by Councilor Lesser. Any discussion on that? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. That's it. So we have in camera. All right. Thanks, everybody, for coming. Oh, we got in camera.